Good evening and welcome to the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. This is a public meeting, and if any member of the public would like to make a comment on any item, there are several ways. If you are on Zoom, when the public comment period opens, raise, please raise, is there echo in here?
It's this.
Okay. Oh, that's better. If you are in Zoom, when the public comment period opens, use the raise your hand icon. You will be unmuted when it's your turn to speak. If you are on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by pressing star nine. Again, you will be unmuted when it's your turn to speak, and if you are in attendance, you can approach the podium and make your comment. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. This meeting is now officially called to order, and we will begin with a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by state, by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat's and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. The acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Sorry, that's a mouthful, but thank you, Wiat people. So can we get a roll call, please? David Loy is not here, but Jennifer Dart.
Sure. Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Chair Masaid Elcock?
Here.
Commissioner Davies?
Here.
Commissioner Mayer?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa is visiting us via Zoom?
Here, present.
Thank you.
And at the staff's table, we have, let's see, Jennifer Dart, Deputy Director of Community Development, Dilo Freitas, Senior Planner, and Joe Matier, Senior Planner, and Heather Equinox, what is your title?
Facilitator.
Our facilitator, thank you. So we're moving on, we got the roll call, so public comment, so we're going to make a change to the agenda tonight, we're gonna, go ahead, and you have a suggestion?
Yeah, I would recommend that we move the public comment period to after the business item, so that it gives the public the opportunity to actually review the information that we're going through with our facilitator tonight, before making public comment.
Okay, do we need to make a motion to amend the agenda?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, can someone please make a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda, so that public comment is after our facilitated discussion this evening.
Are we going to have oral communication at the beginning also?
At the end.
No, at, we're talking about, the motion was to have it only at the end.
And not at the beginning.
And not at the beginning.
And may I ask why?
So this was a special meeting, and the public comment that, I mean, if you want to do an early oral communication about things that are not on the agenda tonight, you can go ahead and do that at this time, yeah.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the idea was that the public comment would be more informed if it happened after the exercise we're about to go through.
The question would be about oral communication on items not on the agenda, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what we, what the intention of switching it was?
That was the intention, only because this is a special meeting, so that wasn't the intention?
Well, because it was a special meeting, I believe this format came from our Minute Track template, which I talked to the administrative person who put this together, and it's the template that they put out for, for this particular type of meeting, which doesn't specifically call for oral communication. So if we would like to do oral communications, early oral communications on items not related to what we're speaking on tonight, you're, feel free to go ahead and do that as public comment, and then we can have public comment, again, after, as the business item.
So what do we think, do we want to open up to items not on the agenda?
My vote is yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what do we do if that motion just dies for lack of a second? Okay, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing for items not on the agenda. If anyone here or on the phone that would like to address, please step forward, you have three minutes, thank you.
Three minutes tonight. So I'm Eric Loudon Slager, Division Four Director for the Fire District, and we had been scheduled to have a meeting with you, show up at our, at your December thirteenth meeting, and unfortunately, that conflicts with our monthly meeting, and so we are requesting that you reschedule that, preferably early in December at another special meeting. We, you know, this has gone on for quite a few months now, and we really would like to get in front of you, and we think you'd like to hear from us. The first Tuesday of the month is our meeting, just like it's your meeting, so it has to be the, or the second Tuesday, we, we share that date, and since you don't have a second meeting in December because of the holiday, we'd really like to get in before the end of the year, so we're hoping that you can look at your calendars and find something early in the month, and make arrangement with us, so that we can once again have a special meeting to present the Fire District's situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, please step forward?
Yes, thank you for this time. Tomorrow, City Council, an item on the agenda is a matter of the funding, one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars request of funding from the City Council. This purported to be a recommendation from the Planning Commission on October eleventh, I don't think it is. All the information I'm saying here is on the arcataone.com website, and I refer that to you. I sent you an email, but I was very late, I apologize, that explains some of this stuff. The, there, on the website, there is a transcription of the nine minutes which the commissioners were speaking about this, and on the, there's also all the packet information from the City Council that talks about this funding. It seems to me that at that October eleventh meeting, you're talking about funding to have a visit from Ben Noble, and what that would involve. The package that is up for vote tomorrow involves a, I believe, three presentations by Ben Noble with graphics supplied by Urban Fields. The cost of the graphics alone for these presentations is fifty-two thousand dollars. None of the one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars is for a product, is for presentation. I think it's a poor use of spending money. I could go on, but the information's there. I urge you to read the City Council packet and see if that is in accordance for what you voted. I also feel that it was not an agendized item on the eleventh, it shouldn't have been voted on at all, but we'll leave that aside. I don't want it to pass tomorrow, I think that you can give much better allocations of funds. That's about it, unless I can field any questions. I know David's not here to answer this question, I think the best thing for the City Council would be to put it off until David is available. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else or anyone online?
There's no one online.
Okay, so we will move on to, well, do we want to discuss anything that anyone has said, or do we want to?
At some point, we're gonna definitely need to discuss our December thirteenth meeting and the Fire District request, I don't know if we want to do that now, or...
Well, we could do that now, but I'm wondering if Arcata Fire could possibly, they can special, do a special meeting and make our meeting on the second Tuesday, since it's, it's a lot of work to schedule a meeting here, so maybe, I'll be happy to talk to your Board President, or...
Yeah, you, you talk to our Board President.
See how far I get?
Yes.
Okay. I'll try.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else before we move on to our business item? Nope, okay, all right, so we are going to move on to our business item, and I'm gonna hand it over to Heather Equinox, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, I'm Heather Equinox, and hello, and I'm sorry in advance that I have my back to you through this process. I'm actually gonna kick it over to Dilo to just set some context about why, oh, and thank you, the sunlight was right in the eyeballs. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dilo first, to just sort of set context in what we're gonna be up to tonight.
Okay, so this is a little bit funny, but I'm going to turn it over to Jen, and then Jen's gonna turn it back to me, and then I'm gonna turn it back to you, so we're just gonna pass this ball around.
You're gonna get to hear from all of us tonight, except maybe Joe, I don't know. So before we get started, I guess I can wait till he's ready. I'm trying to figure out the lighting situation. Yay! Before we get started, I just want to address a couple things about tonight's meeting. First, I just want to share our appreciation for everyone attending a four P M. meeting. I know that that can be difficult, I know that that was really one of the only times that everyone on our Planning Commission was available, but I really appreciate you guys taking the time to do that, and public members, I would like to thank you as well for taking the time to be here. I just wanted to acknowledge that, and we did bring cookies in case anyone needs a little snack, since it's the dinner hour. We've had a couple inquiries from community members about the use of Slido for tonight's meeting, we've had some mixed reviews on Slido, I would say people either hate it or love it, and we will not be using Slido in tonight's presentation and tonight's meeting with Heather, with her facilitator. So that's something that we won't be using, we may bring it back in additional meetings, but at tonight's meeting, we will not be using Slido. The other thing I wanted to address was Commissioner Mayer brought a concern to staff about taking a definitive vote on the Community Benefits Program before determining the streamlining process, and I just wanted to thank Commissioner Mayer for bringing that, that concern up, and let the commission know that we are not asking for a definitive vote tonight, so I just wanted to be really clear to letting you guys know that. This is just the first of several meetings that we're going to be having about the Community Benefits, which is also sometimes called amenities, so those are sort of interchangeable. There's going to be additional opportunity for refinement of those going forward, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that. I also wanted to mention the additional funding for the Form-Based Code scope of work, which will be going to tomorrow night's City Council meeting. That scope does include a series of three workshops, one of the sessions includes Community Benefits, I just wanted to, to mention that as well, you'll see that in the agenda for tomorrow night's City Council. Lastly, we just, we hope that the facilitated meeting is fun, and we're excited about it, we welcome feedback, and I'm gonna turn it over now to Senior Planner Freitas, she's gonna give us some context.
Okay, thanks. So yeah, we are hoping that this meeting will be as fun as this conversation is possibly going to be for everyone, we wanted to try and set something up a little bit more relaxed, with a little bit more support, to try and really get through the material, not only efficiently, but also in a more relaxed way, because people are more creative when they are relaxed, studies show. Okay, so, Community Benefits, just kind of running through the, you know, general high-level stuff here, we're gonna keep it at three thousand feet today, for the most part. The general concept is, we are asking you to rank items, if there is a greater impact or intensity, the Community Benefits are supposed to be greater. There are three types of categories envisioned as outlined in your packet, but all three categories are uncategorized and before you in the mural board that we will be playing with tonight. We will also not be placing the items in the Community Benefit tiers tonight, it's purely intended to be a very initial exercise to poll the commission on relative value of the spectrum of items that we have heard from various members of the public to date. And the good news is, we're not looking for consensus, we're mostly just trying to get a temperature check and figure out how to design future meetings from this point moving forward. So a little note on the categories, it took me a long time to realize this, but the categories in the Gateway Plan tie exactly to the Gateway at a Glance vision, so for anyone in the audience or listening in that did not yet know that connection, the intent of the Community Benefits as currently structured is to basically further the vision that's set in the Gateway Plan, you know, for increasing housing, for increasing equity, for increasing active transportation, and all the things that we hope to move towards as a community. So there were seven original categories in the Gateway Plan, John Barstow is no longer on the commission, but in honor of his effort putting a list together, we have included that in your packet, and we've included his ideas on the mural board. You can either choose to keep some or all of those, it's completely up to you. And we are going to be moving forward tonight, assuming that what you have in your packet has been reviewed by each of you before coming in tonight, but feel free to raise a hand, no judgment, if you need a couple of minutes to refresh before we begin the exercise, because the first exercise is going to be high-level ranking of the categories, so you'll need to have a general understanding of what items and what ideas are currently in each. I see some of you moving to look at that. Okay, and one thing that I just wanted to note, that I think will begin to be a tension that we will need to explore, maybe not tonight, but at an upcoming meeting, something to speak to, a comment that Judith submitted probably more than a month ago now, this idea of should Community Benefits be for tenants of buildings, for the broader community, what should be sort of the interplay between how we set up this program? So for tonight, we're asking to assume it's not necessarily like one or the other, but hopefully, some of that will begin to get pulled out in the ranking exercise, and we are hoping to have a conversation about it in a more detailed way at future meetings, depending on how our conversation moves tonight. So I just wanted to run through what's in your packet really briefly, and where this data came from, to show that we have been compiling information for a few years. The initial stab was part of the two thousand nineteen Housing Element and Infill Market Study, I think most of you were on the commission at that time, and Heather actually was our consultant for the preparation of the Housing Element as well, and put together the Community Engagement Report on that, some of the material before you tonight fed from that work. Also, in two thousand twenty-one, I believe we had six of the city's committees review and rank some of the initial categories which have morphed over time, but still very much relevant. We also have heard a fair amount from the community after the release of the draft as well, including some of the Will Come To Use sessions that we undertook with members of the public and community groups, as well as submitted public comment on the draft document, and Commissioners Barstow and Commissioner Mayer also submitted pretty detailed comment on how they sort of philosophically were approaching the benefits program and what things they thought should be included. And we also did a Form-Based Code workshop in August that included some Slido polling, and I'll go through that in a second. So for the committee rankings, that's packet pages eleven through fourteen, and I just put on here the top three sort of general categories that seem to be rising to the top for them, but their full list is in your packet, and those three things were alternative transportation, connectivity and trails, beautification and investment in the Gateway Area, and housing and community services. And for the Form-Based Code rankings, packet pages fifteen through nineteen, it seemed like generally home ownership was by far and away the most noted option, with Slido, as we've experienced, you can either upvote an option or put in a new one, and many people chose to re-add home ownership, and then more people upvoted it, so it's a little difficult to parse out the data, but definitely home ownership rose to the top for a lot of people, as did cooperative housing and senior housing. We also, as part of that meeting, had some pre-ranked categories that we asked people to, to choose, and affordable housing, active transportation, and open space were the top choices based on the sixty or so people that came to that meeting in August. So tonight's ask, just to kind of wrap up my presentation here, is first to, again, kind of rank on a spectrum, what should have the most value and what should have the least? That's really the intent of tonight's meeting, is to begin to have that conversation, we will not be finishing it in three hours. We also would be interested to hear additional ideas, if maybe we've put something on the mural board that isn't fully capturing an idea that you have or needs to be reframed, we will have an opportunity to discuss that after the ranking is completed. Also, we're hoping that we can begin to sort of chip away at this concept of what amenities should probably be required, and in what cases should they be required, and that's something we've definitely heard from the community several times throughout this process. And also, we're hoping that if there is anything that has made it onto this list that doesn't seem realistic, or doesn't seem like it should have high enough value to be considered further, we'd love to be able to take some of the things off the list as well. So, just some additional disclaimers, as Jen mentioned, we are not asking for formal action tonight, and also, I think partially, this is gonna come up for some of the energy efficiency items, if not others. We are planning to revisit this list over time, and that will be required as laws update, and also as our preferences and needs as a community continue to change over time. So that is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to field any questions before I turn it over to Heather, if you guys have any. Okay, Heather, take it away.
All right. I'll pause a second and let Dilo start to show the screen. Cool, so I wanted to first just set up the proposal we had for how to use your time and the work that's before you, and just confirm that that's gonna work out for you. And after that, I would also, just before we dive into the work itself, I'll give you a second to consider this question, I was hoping we could do a go-round across all the commissioners, and that you'd be willing to share, I put it on that orange Post-it note on the wall, one hope you have for the future of Arcata, spicy brief, in a sentence or two, right, one hope you have for the future of Arcata, so you can think on that if you need some time. Meanwhile, I will walk through the desired outcomes for the session, and I'm reading off of this wall here, if you're wanting to track it visually, it's on the big white poster paper, or you can also, I'll zoom in a little bit and zoom so you can see it there too. So in terms of session outcomes, one, we just wanted to understand where you have agreement, and also where you have difference, and how you think about the relative value of these different benefit categories. So there's a bunch of benefits that have been listed, they've been categorized, so first, we want to take a pass at just understanding where each of you sit, and again, where there might be overlap in terms of how you see the relative value of each of those categories, and where, and surface where there's difference, not trying to reach agreement on any of it, but just really sort of build our shared understanding of how you each think about it. And then the second primary outcome is really around understanding how you perceive those individual benefits within a couple of the categories, as many as we could get to, we anticipate hopefully getting to two different benefit categories, but then we just wanted to see how it is that you perceive the relative value of each of those individual benefits, and sort of your rationale, like how you think about that relative benefit. This is all sort of rolling up and will be of service to, as I understand it, other consultants that you've hired and staff, as they start to consider these different benefit packages. So really, the point of today's session is to help us all build a shared understanding, again, of how you're thinking about these and what's your rationale behind it. Not trying to push for agreement, or consensus, or anything like that, but again, just trying to understand where, how you each conceptualize it. So after I get through this opening bit, we're basically gonna dive into the different benefits categories, I'm now down in the flow, part of that sheet there, I'll scroll down here so you can see it as well. So first, we're gonna first look at the, the categories of benefits, and I'm gonna ask you to do, well, first, I'll make some space to see if Dilo has a brief presentation, anything you want to share about the benefit categories, and then I'll give you a moment to do some individual work on how, again, sort of like ranking their relative value, and then we'll do some group work, and we'll just be seeing like where you're aligned and where you're different, and I'll be asking you to share your thinking. I hear you often don't take breaks in three-hour meetings, I am a mere mortal and definitely need a bio break, and so we built one in to like, probably hit around five twenty-five-ish, just to take a five-minute break to take care of yourselves. And then we'll come back together again, and we'll check out some of the, at least two of the categories of benefits, and we can play with which ones we want to work with, perhaps there's some that you've, there's a lot of consensus around being of high value, and so maybe we can dive into those first. But then we'll be doing, again, that same process of maybe hearing a little bit about each of those benefits within that category, see if there's any clarifying questions that would be useful to cover, and then do, again, sort of that ranking across the relative value of each of those individual benefits within that category. So hopefully, you know, we can get through maybe two categories, who knows, maybe we'll get through more. But then the intent is to give you a moment to just reflect on how this worked for you, or how this didn't work for you, just to assess how this special session went. And then I was landing the public comment to be at six forty, sorry about that, I'll move that. And then that would give you twenty minutes, and you would, as I understand it, intend to adjourn by seven, so let me check. Okay, so far? Good enough? Yes. Should I be calling you Commissioner Mayer? Is that the protocol here? I really don't know, it's an honest question.
You can call me yes. That works. So Dilo was talking about amenities and Community Benefits interchangeably?
Yeah.
And when we're looking at the plan as a whole, we're looking at things that we would like to see in the Gateway Area Plan, and generally, talking about the Community Benefits Program as items that would qualify a specific project for either streamlined approval, or for a relaxation of standards that would otherwise apply. So we're not, in this discussion, talking about things that we would like to see in the overall plan, we are just addressing things that would qualify a specific project for either streamlined approval, or a relaxation of standards that would otherwise apply, is that correct?
I have to kick it to your staff, I'm not an expert in this at all.
Yeah, so Judith, I think...
Yeah, that's better than yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it sounds like your question is, like, will you have the opportunity through this exercise in mural to sort of differentiate what might not be a benefit, but should be more of a standard or required amenity, is that correct?
I'm, I'm, I'm having issues with a need for a very specific definition of benefits in this context, because there are plan-wide benefits, and there are project-wide benefits that would qualify that project for streamlined approval, or for some change in the underlying standards for that specific project, so that, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is it that, that limited definition we're looking at here, when we talk about benefits?
Broad, as possible, for now.
Okay, so we're looking at the plan as a whole, what do we want to see in the plan as a whole, or what do we want to see as benefits linked to projects?
Plan as a whole for tonight, I think as high-level as possible for this evening, and they are, you know, in a lot of cases, one in the same, in the sense that, you know, a benefit comes about as a trigger from development. So if a project comes forward, it is offering some sort of benefit, which might feed into a larger program that predates the project, for example, like a arts fund, would be something that would predate a project, but a project would, it wouldn't get anything paid into it unless the project came about, so I'm not sure if that, it looks to me like it's not clarifying your question.
It's kind of contradicting the way in which we've been defining Community Benefits so far, in my mind, and, and so, yeah, it, it's not clarifying.
Well, if it would make it more clear to... Well, if it would make it more clear to explore this specifically tied to projects, I think we could, we could do that as well. I don't think that would be an issue.
May I ask a point of clarity on this one? Are we not talking specifically about building height? Or isn't that largely the issue that would distinguish whether or not the community should be seeing benefits from a project? I mean, if they could build four stories, basically, right now, without any gateway community benefits program, then it would be at the fifth floor that we would, the community would want to see some give-back, like contribution to a trail, or setback from the street, an additional 12 feet, or whatever, you know, all these different things that are outlined in here. Is that roughly where you're at, or not where you're at in this discussion? And, or am I incorrect in that?
Yeah, I, the way we've been defining the Community Benefits Program has been that type of thing, rather than what we want to see in the Gateway Plan area in the future. That's a way narrower definition than what I think you're implying now. You know, there are all kinds of things I would love to see in the Plan area, almost all of which I wouldn't say would qualify for the narrowly-defined Community Benefits Program, which would be way narrower, in fact, extremely narrow. So it would, I guess it would help if we were at least all on the same page, whether or not it's, you know, one side of that definition or the other, so that we're all kind of evaluating the same thing.
I mean, the way, I hear your question, and clearly the benefits will need to be tied to building heights at a certain point, but if I'm understanding the objective for this evening, it is to keep it way broader and more peeled out than that. And all we're trying to do now is say, okay, before we start getting too far into the details, perhaps of specific definitions, or specific which ones get specifically tied to which building heights, let's just try and dip our toes in the water and say, which categories, are there areas where we all agree this category is the most important? And that we start looking at it tentatively like that. And maybe if we just get into the exercise, maybe some of this will get a little clearer. We can certainly...
I'm up for it.
But we gotta start somewhere, and I see what your question is, but I don't see how we answer it and go into dipping our toes into just doing some broad categorization at this point.
We already have a set of policies in the draft, which need not be ranked one against the other. They, you know, a set of policies doesn't have to be ranked, they don't have to be equivalent, they, but when you're talking about benefits that would be weighed against a relaxation of standards, then yeah, it's probably important to weigh and rank them, but a set of policies doesn't have to be ranked against, one against the other.
Yeah, I think when we had originally thought of it, we were kind of more thinking, you know, what Commissioner Davies was communicating, but I think, Judith, I understand that, you know, what you're saying is that, you know, when you're thinking about community benefits, you're thinking about, you know, what would, what should an eight-story building, what kind of benefits should be associated with a specific extreme case? Is that correct? Are you wanting to say, you know, if it's an eight-story building, this has to be true and work backward from there? Because it's possible we could structure the exercise in that way if it, you know, would speak to your desire to keep it really focused on a specific, on a specific case.
I guess when I, when we've been talking about the Community Benefits Program, that's the type of thing that we've understood, I think, on the commission. The rest are policies which need not be weighed or ranked against each other. There's no reason why we can't have plan policies addressing a wide range of, you know, cultural features, and also have housing policies that address a wide range of features.
So I think, I think that, Judith, yes, we are talking about the Community Benefits Program, we're not talking about the policies overall in the document. So I think there's a little bit of confusion, but I think if we can consider it as, as focused on the community benefits as we've defined them and discussed them, and move forward with the exercise broadly, that would, would that seem okay?
Sounds great.
Yeah, we need, and we need to get going, because we're, yeah, let's get through this and see how it goes, so.
Okay, sounds good. So, we have some, I have some requests. One is, and you'll see these here on the wall, or on the Mural page. So one is, I'm gonna ask you to do work, and then obviously have some conversation. I am of the belief that all of us are smarter than any one of us, so I'm gonna be asking you to share the airtime. So if somebody hasn't shared yet, like, make note, maybe, right, we want to make sure that we get to hear from everybody. I imagine this is gonna be a little messy, we're not all in agreement, there's still not clarity. Hopefully, through the process, we can arrive at greater clarity. And again, I'm not pushing, no one's pushing anybody for agreement today. One thing that I wanted to offer up or make a request about, and this is related to the sharing the speaking time, is if I'm hearing somebody, right, share some stuff, I might summarize it to see if I got the juicy bits, right? And then say, like, can we move on? Is that cool? So I'm asking for sort of like permission to be able to summarize some of your ideas to be able to move us along. Is that okay?
Granted.
All right, cool. And so with that, I would love it, could we just do a quick go-round about that question that I had proposed before we get into the work? And then I'm gonna show you, we'll do a little thing in Mural just to make sure everybody's cool. So, one hope you have for the future of Arcata. Dan, can we start with you and go down the line?
Sure, that Arcata grows in a equitable and exciting way, that we show the rest of the state how, you know, artistic and creative communities like this can do right for growing to match the population increase that comes, you know, that we do this right.
Sweet, thanks, Dan. Kimberly.
So, one, that's tough.
I know.
I'm gonna piggyback a little bit from Dan with regards to wanting to engage the whole community, because that's how we are equitable. And I would hope that we could do this in a sustainable way to address climate change.
Mm-hmm. Cool. Thank you, Kimberly. Julie.
That we can somehow increase housing density significantly, yet somehow maintain our unique small-town feel.
I'd like to see Arcata continue to use the kind of bold vision that brought us projects like the waste treatment, Wildlife Sanctuary, McDaniel Slough. I would like us to be brave and bold about addressing the housing crisis and other components of the Gateway Area Plan. I'd like to see Arcata continue to bring that vision to the world.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I just say ditto?
Yes. Oh yeah, thank you so much. And Christian, we know you are on Zoom.
All right. Yeah, I'd like to see equitable and responsible growth in the city of Arcata, where in which we are sidelining individuals, you know, pursue a life here in this community. And it benefits everyone.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. So you've already seen, I don't always get spelling 100% accurate when I'm going fast, and so I welcome you to like be messy, too, and not get spelling right as well. So we are gonna move into doing some work. Ah, I did want to offer this thing up. So, we were in a bit of a tricky spot when we were designing this meeting. If we were 100% in this room together, this would be a great time to like break out big Post-it notes, and like work at the wall, and everybody could see what was going on. Because it's a hybrid meeting, and we also wanted to be highly inclusive of people who could only participate through Zoom, we kind of had to like choose a different technology, because working at the wall would mean that all of those folks would be excluded from the conversation and not get to see the work that you're doing. So this was our happy medium, and you can evaluate it at the end, and see if this was a good enough happy medium, or if you might want to explore a different option. This is a tool called Mural, it's essentially like a giant whiteboard with sticky notes. I've made most of the board, so you don't have to do much, except for move Post-it notes. And so, but I'll get into more details about if you do want to write things or change things on Post-it notes, I can help you do that in a minute. So one thing to just offer up is a, one way to, actually what I can do, to help you get to the right place on the board, is I can summon you, I can bring you all. And so hopefully that just brought you all on your computers. Okay, cool. If you wander away at any point in time, you can always just click on my little icon, which is down here on the bottom. You can see I'm the only one that has a picture in it, and then you'll go to wherever I am on the board. And so I just wanted to make sure everybody could move a Post-it note, because that's the first thing that I'm gonna ask you to do on that work. So you, yep, you just click on it and then drag it over. Let me know if anyone, if that's a challenge or unable to complete that. All right, cool. I think we're good. And then I've already explained how to get around, just by sort of clicking on my face. There's also this feature called an outline, I just opened it up on the right-hand side. I got there by clicking on this little icon. On the top, it looks like a sheet of paper with bullet points and lines, that opens up this outline. And for this first piece of work, I've made each of you a workspace. And so, Dan, you can click on the outline thing that says Daniel, and you will go directly to that part of the board. If you're having a hard time getting to the outline, just holler, and I can come up there and help you out. Okay. Is anybody stuck?
So do you want us to, in our area where we have our name, and then the eight, start dragging and...
Yes. So if you're there, that is the first piece of work. And again, we did want to just say, like, if anybody, we built in a little time to have a brief presentation, or questions and answers, questions of clarification, mostly to staff, if you have questions of clarification about any of those eight categories. But if not, then the first task is to do some work. Did you want to share on it?
Yep. One quick thing is that if you wanted to rank all of the categories equal, you're welcome to do that. That in itself is important information for staff to know. If there is a category that you don't think should be added at all, leave it below the line, you aren't required to include it, and that will be the same with the next exercise as well. You always have the option to not include it on the spectrum of ranking if you choose.
Cool. So is anybody not able to get to your workspace, your individual workspace? Give a holler. I'm gonna zoom out. Yeah, I know. I'll zoom out. And so again, the continuum is higher value to lower value. No one, I don't think, is saying that any of these have no value, it's just relative to one another. Yep, and I will pick on Julie, see how she's moving them above the line, that is exactly what I'm asking you to do. If you could rank, put them, move them above the line, that way we'll know if anybody wants any to be left out.
Yeah, anything you don't think should be considered, leave below the line.
Yep. And I just want to check on Christian. Are you able to get in there, Christian, and use your workspace?
I'm working on it.
Okay. Holler if you need help. And if there's any like tech glitches or barriers, I can also move things for you. So I welcome you to let me know if you want me to do that for you. And I will zoom in, so you can see what people are doing.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So what if you have something that you're equally weighting it? Do we just...
You can put them above each other.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. Christian, please let me know if you'd like me to move them for you.
I think I'm getting there.
Can I just check in with you all, or is that like zoomed up enough, or you need a little bit more? It's real simple, you're okay. Okay. All right, let's just take another minute here, give you some thinking time. All right, Christian's with us. I'm just gonna move these so they don't get cut off behind there. Yeah, I understand. Sometimes they're, they don't always go with the flow. All right. So when I just do the first scan, it looks like, well, A, everybody's complete, is that true? Or good enough?
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Yeah.
Architectural design seems like it's something that's gonna come through form-based code, rather than community benefits?
Sounded like a statement, but it was a question. Yes, I think, and you know, Jen, or Ben, or Joe, feel free to also weigh in, but it's sort of a both and, there will be baseline architectural standards for all projects, and that will include like exterior facade, as well as setbacks and other elements of design. There may be items that we could explore as a commission that would be an additional benefit. For example, if we wanted to explore, you know, incorporating tribal design elements into a structure, or other, you know, ways to honor sort of the past history of our region, that could be something that we don't require, but could offer it as an option. So, thinking about things that could be... So, thinking about things that could be in addition to baseline standards would be an amenity. And that can be whatever you want it to be or it could be removed from the list.
Thank you.
Awesome. So, I think you all finished doing your sort of ranking along the continuum. For me, I was hoping again just to see like, where's there a lot of alignment? Where are you relatively close together in terms of thinking about something as being high, medium, or low value? And where are you really different from one another? And so, I'm just doing this scan and it looks like each and every one of you put housing creation really high up on the list of being high value. Any of you want to speak to why that's high for you? Or ended up on the right-hand side of the continuum?
I mean, I think creation of housing or rather the dearth of housing is underneath so much of what we're struggling with as a community right now. From healthcare to affordability to homelessness. So, that's why I put housing creation at the top of the list.
Nice.
Yeah, mine's homeownership opportunities and that's, it's like winning the Lotto. I mean, it would make such a difference in so many people's lives. I'm hoping we can create some homeownership opportunities affordable. Because that could, that's the beginning. That's where it all starts.
Yeah. Cool. Anybody else? We'll go to Kim and then we'll come over to you, Judith.
So, I just lost a friend because they were unhoused due to exposure last Wednesday. So, it's definitely on my mind.
I'm sorry to hear that, Kimberly. Yeah. And Judith?
Yeah, I see an opportunity in the Gateway area to bring a large part of Arcata's land area, which to many of us are kind of blank spots on the map as underutilized industrial sites into housing for people. And much of the rest of those opportunities are, you know, they flow from that.
Yeah.
But basically, we have a massive opportunity for changing land use here and housing is what drives it.
Thank you so much, Judith. Cool. I wanted to also know, I'm seeing at least a couple of you put also more to the right-hand side. Green building, sustainability and resilience. So, I saw Judith, you put that more to the right. Kimberly did as well. Scott, you, you know, it's not all the way to the right, but pretty close over there. Would any of you that ranked it more toward the right sort of speak to why that is?
Or houses on fire.
Well, I'm more interested in that because it does make it more affordable. Green building to people that live there, their utility bills will be lower and it's just, that's, and it's environmentally friendly, so that's why.
Thank you. Yeah, Scott?
I also think it just reflects core Arcata values.
Alright.
Can I just throw in that I didn't put it too far to the right just because I was feeling like that's something that, unless we're going way above and beyond the energy standards of the state of California, the city of Arcata and all the code requirements that are already there. I just feel like that should perhaps be, and this gets back to what Judith was bringing up earlier, something that's just part of code. Like, how is this a benefit? Let's just make it citywide. So, I don't know.
Yep. Great. And thanks for leading the way, Dan. I'm also sharing like rationale as to why it didn't end up all the way to the right. I actually want to pick up on that because that was another place where there was maybe a breakpoint. Does anyone speak, want to speak to like why it didn't necessarily end up all the way to the right for you? In addition to what Dan offered? Good enough? Cool. Let's hear about open space. So, here's where there's some, a little bit more difference perhaps. So, for some of you, it was like right after housing creation and for others of you, it was a little bit further down on the spectrum towards lower value. You know, Judith, you had it more to the right. Kimberly, you had it more to the right. Actually, maybe many of you did. Anyone care to speak about that rationale?
Well, I would. To me, that's what gives back to the rest of Arcata. That's what makes this whole area something that we enjoy walking through or biking through. The parks, the benches, the amenities that we all get to enjoy for, you know, for now on. This whole area could get built out in a whole bunch of different ways that don't include trails and open spaces. And so, for that to be tied right into the, from the get-go is very important to me.
Thank you. Judith?
Yeah, if we were to maximize the use of this area for the maximum number of housing units to house the absolute maximum number of residents, we wouldn't have any rationale to plan for open space in that area. And so, putting them both to the right indicates that we need to resolve that possible contradiction and that we're not willing to totally sacrifice open space in that area to maximize the number of housing units and that we're looking for some kind of a balance.
Thank you, Judith. Yeah, yeah.
I agree. And then it's just, it's just logical. Like, if we're trying to encourage people to park their cars or not have cars and walk, we need to make a pleasant, we need to make our town walkable where why wouldn't you want to walk? It's just beautiful, you know, all these trails and you're away from the cars and it's just logical, you know? And it just makes Arcata better.
Yeah. Thank you. I did want to just check in with Christian. I know I can't see you and I can't see if you've raised your hand in Zoom. So, I just wanted to know, you're welcome. I welcome you to unmute at any point in time. And if you have a comment about any of the ones we've covered so far, I welcome you to do that. There you are.
In respects to the importance of open space, it's, you know, it's, it's a core component, you know, of developing, you know, a gathering place for, for individuals. Not only those that are going to be, you know, that are within the Gateway area, but also, you know, as Dan was stating, you know, it's the overall benefit of the community. So, I didn't necessarily rank it as high as other things. I felt like it was kind of almost in line with the building amenities and so forth. It kind of correlates with that. But, you know, I definitely recognize its importance and I definitely understand its value for, for myself and, you know, for others in the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Christian. Hey, how about we dive into one that some of you ranked pretty highly and others saw lower value in it, which was around economic development and job creation and provision of essential services. So, and then we will, I promise, get to transportation and the others. I just noticed that there was perhaps some, some difference on that one. So, I wanted to sort of unearth it and hear rationale, how you think about that one in particular as a category of benefits.
I can start this one?
Cool.
There we go. I ranked it high because ultimately, you know, without, without jobs, without creation of jobs, you know, specifically, you know, within the city of Arcata, but also, you know, having the opportunity within the Gateway area to incorporate multi-use, multi-function, you know, within, you know, these proposed structures. Having a small business, you know, on the first floor, you know, a restaurant, you know, an office space or whatever it may be. It promotes, you know, it, well, having jobs will ultimately enable folks to have reason and purpose, you know, within that community. And it creates kind of, create a focal point, you know? In addition to housing, it can also be, you know, a business area or technology area or so forth. That also encompasses, you know, living space for, you know, for those that are, you know, living in this area. So, without jobs, you know, we're not going to create, you know, there's not going to be a demand ultimately for an increasing population. Unless, you know, it's not, it's not, I'm looking at the full picture ultimately because, you know, we can have a bunch of retirees moving here or we can have a bunch of other folks. There's, you know, definitely a younger portion of the population here that needs jobs. And we need, you know, part of this process is thinking about how can we, how can we encourage, you know, the development of business also in the Gateway area.
Got it. Cool. Let's hear from some other folks. I know some of you, and again, it's just relative value. You put it further down. Kimberly?
So, I was thinking it was in another place, but I definitely would like to see a work-live kind of thing for artists. So, if that is in that particular area, then I guess yes.
And originally though, when you, you put it further down on the lower value end of the spectrum, can you share your thinking about that one? Or if you need a second, that's cool, we can come back to it.
Give me a minute.
Yeah, you bet. I think, Dan, you were going to share.
Sure. I have it on the lower value and I just didn't know quite how it tied into community benefits. Like that a developer would be able to say, "I'm creating jobs", unless he was building, I don't know, whatever, an office building or something. And so, I just don't see it in the discussions that we've had as community benefits.
Thank you very much. Others?
I agree with, I kind of agree with what Dan was saying because to me, it's not necessarily community benefit. It is community benefit, but if the developer is going to charge for rent for that, it's sort of a developer's benefit. But I ranked it lower even though it is a really high important. But kind of similar to what Christian was saying, similar but different. I feel like if, I feel like jobs might follow all this housing. So, I feel maybe the opposite could be true from what Christian was saying because we do have, tend to have a really educated population here in Arcata. And I feel like jobs, I mean, employers might come here because of how we've got this set up, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Didn't explain that very well, but you know what I mean.
Following you. Anybody else care to share thoughts around maybe why it was further to the left for you in terms of relative value? Yeah?
I just took somewhat more of a sort of Field of Dreams, sort of if you build it, they will come kind of attitude for economic development. I'm just trusting that along with all this housing stock creation and the opportunity for businesses that there will be a sort of organic growth in that area and that it wasn't something we needed to focus on with the same level of concern that I have about housing creation.
Got it. Beautiful. Thank you so much. Alright, I wanted to check, oh, go ahead.
I guess I just wanted to add something that Judith had pointed out in that if we're going to be having affordable housing and we have businesses that the folks that live there can afford to, you know, buy or be part of that. So, that's what came to my mind is all of these out of the reach of the common person.
Yeah.
And how would that benefit the community?
Thank you. Okay. I wanted to check in with you all about transportation. So, I'm going to do a scan out and then I'll zoom in again. Transportation sure was closer to the right of higher value for quite a few of you. Yeah, almost all of you. Maybe a little bit of difference on, for maybe one or two of you. Care to share about why, how you're, how you're viewing that as a benefit? As a category? Why is it high? Yeah?
I mean, I think it's a core component of what's going to make this Gateway area project a success or not is the ability to build higher dancing density where it's going to make having a car, you know, less of a primary option. I think transportation is critical to making it a success.
Thank you. Saw some nods. Cool. Anybody want to add to that?
I think it's key that the whole Gateway area is so close to the existing commercial district and the, you know, Creamery District and so much of where we already walk and it just feels like, gosh, that's only three or four blocks away. It would all tie together in a really nice, walkable way.
Okay. Let's check in around arts and culture and beautification. So, seeing sort of middle, maybe mid-low? Lower, lower, lower. Tell me about that. Oh, here's a midway, a midpoint. So, tell me, offer some rationale, how you're thinking about that one? Wherever you landed. Judith, yeah?
This is one of these things where rankings seems to be a disservice to our desire to have an area that's beautiful and that's a home to great culture and in terms of policies. But part of my rationale for putting these, these other things a little bit higher is that we can have objective standards by which we can judge our success in something like a benefits program. But in terms of, you know, saying, "We want this at the expense of that", I'm not sure this format is doing a service to, to that. And so, in terms of the types of things that policy can achieve with more objective standards, it kind of slipped down, but it doesn't mean that it's not valuable.
Totally. Thank you for articulating that. Yeah. Yeah, Julie?
So, again, what she said, art and culture are, even though I ranked it the lowest, it's still really important. But if it would have been specified that it's in the Creamery District, I probably would have ranked it up high. I just think that the housing and the transportation, open space is just so much more important and hopefully, art and culture will naturally follow.
Scott?
Yeah, I made a linkage between beautification and enhanced architectural features and exterior design. And so, I felt like I'd kind of covered it by prioritizing that.
Got it.
So, I live in Valley West and we don't have any art and it's not very pretty. And so, when we had the Luna sculpture, which was the only piece of art we had out there, and then we did the participatory budget, we got murals. People were really excited and it made it more livable. And if we're going to be putting dense, lots of people in a space, I think that art and culture is super important.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing your perspective on that one. Okay. Okay. And let's see. There's a couple more. There's, let's check out the enhanced architectural features and exterior design piece. So, I know, Scott, you had referenced, like you linked those two together. Yeah? Can others share about how you were thinking about enhanced architectural features and exterior design? I know, for example, Dan, right, like it's still below the line for you. Do you mind articulating?
Yeah, it was just as I asked earlier or suggested that it's actually should be part of form-based code unless, you know, we're going above and beyond something. I just am really liking to think that form-based code is going to be full of enhanced architectural features.
Thanks. How about others? How are you thinking about that one as a category of benefits?
I, of course, would love enhanced architectural features. I'm just afraid that those additional costs the developer may pass on to the tenants or the potential homeowners. So, I'm a little worried about that.
Yeah.
So, I think we need to be really careful about what we ask for. If we make it too expensive, then we might not get what we want.
Yeah. So, there might be some unintended consequences for that. How about others? Yeah, Kimberly?
So, I was thinking of like the open courtyards and those kinds of things. And I know that so many folks are afraid that the Gateway area plan is going to make Arcata something that it isn't. And I feel like if we can make it beautiful and make it conform with what we already have and what we love. So, that's why I rated it. have and what we love, so that's why I rated it that way. And I think also, yeah, just the courtyard and those kinds of things, I think, would be a wonderful addition as a community benefit.
Thank you. Anybody else? Christian, just making space, in case you wanna come in?
Yeah, I think it's, I think I'm kind of more in the same line as Dan, in respects to, I feel like a lot of this should be fleshed out in the Form-Based Code. And then also, in the same, I feel also similarly as, as Julie feels, is, you know, we, you know, we, we do have to have, you know, we can't make it so expensive and make so many requirements, so then, you know, a developer, you know, passes the buck to, you know, the potential future homeowner, or the tenant, or, you know, so forth. So, you know, as much as I would like to have it, you know, I think there's elements that we can incorporate into our Form-Based Code, but, you know, choosing it as a, as a benefit, you know, it's, it's a little bit more difficult to, it's, it's, you know, to, to essentially, to be able to actually be fully behind.
Got it. All right. Thank you, Christian. All right. I also, I don't think I checked in with you, Dan, about another one that you might have left below the line. Did you wanna say anything about the other one?
Sure. Building amenities, structural and operational features that enhance residents' quality of life.
Yeah.
I guess I see that as something between the developer and the potential tenants. If they want to attract good tenants, long-term tenants, charge a little more, I don't know, that that stuff would just come through that process, rather than from us trying to figure it out as a community benefit. I also am concerned that the Gateway, I don't know, this is, that it feels good for the whole community.
Yeah.
And so I'm a little concerned about going too far into what happens inside of the buildings.
I totally agree. I actually wrote down exactly what you said, just about, yeah, some of these exercise rooms and, you know, all these meeting rooms. That is not necessarily a community benefit, and I would rather just leave that up to the developer, and kind of take that off the list.
Okay. Right. And I know we're gonna drill into much greater detail around, no, I'm glad you brought it, or you raised it, 'cause now we, we know we can work with that when we get into the categories more deeply. Kimberly?
So, I don't know if this follows, but in my mind, it feels like it might be market-driven, that if you want to have your particular complex filled, you're gonna have to compete with the one over here, over there. So what can you add to draw people, so?
So maybe the market's gonna take care of it, as opposed to having to include it in a benefit package. Got it. Okay. So, I could be off-base, but I think we walked through each and every one of them, and I asked for your sort of rationale. Did I miss one? Oop. Do you mind shaking that? There you go. Are we okay? I think I got them all.
Is there anybody else who put anything below the line that?
I didn't see.
No?
Oh, did I? No, sorry. Christian, sorry, I might have misinterpreted. There were a couple maybe below the line for you, is that true? Or was it sort of stacking them?
It's the effort of me trying to stack it.
Okay. Cool. So they were both up here, it was like, like so. Cool. Okay. And I just wanna check in, Judith, I don't wanna misinterpret if there's arrows, but I make arrows accidentally all the time, so if that was the case there...
It's, it's, it's my cursor having fun all by itself.
Okay, cool. I'm gonna take care of that. Sometimes it has deep meaning, so I didn't wanna overlook that. Okay, cool. Okay, I will summon you. There you go. As you look at them overall, and you've heard one another share rationale, is there anything else that's like, top of mind for you, as you look at the scale, again, of the categories overall? We're gonna dive into the specifics next. Judith, what you got?
It's interesting trying to rank these categories, because there, there's some very specific things in some of the categories that I would rank as huge priorities, but the rest of the category is not so important. And so, it's a little bit of a problem to have such broad categories and attempt to value them against each other, because, you know, some of those items are kind of absolute minimums in a category that, overall, perhaps, is, is not as fundamental, so.
Thanks for that reflection. Makes sense.
And I, I wanna concur. One of the things that I did not, I, you know, I put retail and job creation kind of on the other end of the spectrum, but I really felt strongly about purpose-built spaces for children's daycare services and services for seniors, but the rest of them I didn't, wasn't super excited about. So if I could pull that out, then I would have definitely ranked it differently.
Yeah. Thanks for that observation. All right. So then this next piece of work that's before you is gonna be pretty important, 'cause that's where we're, we're going. So, if it's okay, I would love to take a five-minute break. There's cookies, there's bathroom, there's water, and then we'll come back together and
Do we have Christian with us, too? Sweet. All right. So as promised, we wanted to dig in to some of the categories of benefits and tease out those ones that maybe you're experiencing are viewed as higher value and which ones, again, relative to the others, you're seeing as lower value. Since there was a lot of energy around housing creation as a category of being of high value, I was proposing we start there. Is that okay? Anyone opposed? All right, cool. So before we even dive in, well, a couple things. One, you'll note there's only one workspace instead of each and every one of you having your own workspaces. So this is going to be a little different in that I'm just going to ask you to like move them up and then see if you like, you know, collectively end up moving them to be in a sequence that you ultimately agree with. I'm imagining that's not going to be the case. So in that instance, we're going to see where, which ones are getting moved more, right? Like maybe some of you keep seeing something up at higher value and some of you see it down at lower value. Those are the ones we're going to talk about more explicitly. So they might move a little bit and that's perfectly fine. Ultimately, we can duplicate some of these postsets just to reflect that maybe you see them in different places. And before we even dove into sort of moving them along the scale and analyzing them, I wanted to make space to see if D-Lo, if you might have questions of clarification that staff could answer for you about any of the items, any of the benefits that are under, just looking at housing now. So I'm zooming in on them. If you want to follow me, you can follow me. And if you want to find it, that workspace, if you use the outline feature and click on, it's the seventh one down called Housing Creation, it'll zoom you right to that space. Or you can click on my face. Judith?
So any one of us can move any of these items?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
So what happens if there's a tug of war?
Yeah, I figure that will happen and those are the ones then we'll talk about. Yep.
Heather has assured us this has worked in the past with other groups, so we're about to find out.
I mean, we're going to have a moment where somebody's going to move your cheese and that's okay. The point is we want to have a conversation about the ones where you're actually not in alignment about. There might be some that you are in alignment and then we don't have to talk about those.
So if we put it below the line, is that saying we're excommunicating it? Or what if we want to stack it? Put it above?
If you personally see something that should stay below the line, just leave it there.
And what if we find that we want to put it equivalent to something that's already there?
That's perfectly fine. You can stack it.
Stack it, okay.
Yeah, totally. But I did want to just check, did any of you had any questions of clarification about what any of those things mean?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
What's the limited equity cooperative cohousing with permanent affordability restrictions?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at this one and then, or yeah, maybe let's just have Jen do it. It looks like she'll probably be easy, easier for her to answer.
So the limited equity cooperative cohousing with permanent affordability restrictions would mean something like a community land trust? That kind of model, or there's other type of cooperative housing models that are used in, mainly in larger communities than ours, but that are, you can build equity, a limited amount of equity, which maintains the affordability for the next person that buys it.
So it keeps the housing stock affordable for the next person? So they do that at like, Humboldt Housing has several different developments throughout Arcata that give a entrance point for somebody and then as they grow and can upgrade, they move out with their limited equity, but it's not market rate. It's still going to remain affordable and somebody else can come in and have an opportunity to have home ownership.
So you don't get to take your equity with you?
You do, it's, but you agree by going into it to acquire a limited amount of equity. So there's a formula calculation for the community land trust homes. So when they sell the home, they do receive equity from the sale of the home, but it's not on, you know, it's not on the market rates that we have currently. So it maintains its affordability for the next buyer.
Okay. How do I get this to move over this way?
Chair, did you have a question or should we turn it over to Judith?
No, I'm, no, I'm sorry.
Judith, do you want to go ahead or wait until after you rank? I see your mic is still on. Okay.
Kimberly, your tug of war came to pass.
This is looking great, though, you guys. This is how it's supposed to be working. Thank you for playing our game.
I'm sorry, which one are you talking about?
This one for you.
Oh, the owner occupied? Yeah, well, that's so important. There's so many people that want to buy their first home in Arcata and if we can figure out how to make that work and somehow, I think that's number one. Housing is kind of everything. Okay, we're going to, we're going to check on that. Jen's going to go talk with you. Okay, thank you. Thank you for letting us know.
I would just reflect on what Julie said that we, I like to think that the gateway will include lots of robust opportunity for new homeownership and/or second home, however, a variety of things. To think of it as many, 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 many more rentals to me is very disappointing, so.
Yeah, I agree with Julie and Dan on this one. I think at whatever level these units are priced, I think changing the overall balance of homeownership versus rental in Arcata towards something closer to the state or national average would be beneficial in a variety of ways and focusing on making sure they're owner occupied. Everything in that box is important to help us get there.
I actually think that providing opportunities for owner occupied affordable housing is really important, but the idea of changing the ratio of homeownership to rentals in a college town is unrealistic if indeed we're actually expecting to house university students in this community rather than chase them to McKinleyville, Eureka, or Blue Lake. Students are not expected necessarily to be homeowners. They wouldn't qualify to do so, most of them wouldn't want to do that. And so while I think it's really important to have opportunities for homeownership in affordable housing in the gateway, I think that the idea of changing the percentage of homeownership in a college town is a huge red herring and it's one that's come before that, the housing elements and housing policy in Arcata for decades and I think is misplaced.
You know, we are more than just a university town, too. I mean, there are people who want to live here who are not college students or have graduated. So we're more than just the university. I mean, the university makes us special, but so we're more than just college students.
One of the post-it notes just to the left of that is the purpose-built special needs housing for students, for seniors, for mobility impaired residents, for people who are experiencing homelessness, which is also speaking to your point, too, I'm imagining. Anyone care to elaborate on why that moved up really high to the right for you?
So right now, there just really isn't any homeownership opportunities unless you're rich and famous. And so I feel so blessed that I had an opportunity to get a condo when the city of Arcata had the first time home buyers opportunity. I would have never been able to do that. And so I have my piece of the pie. I want my friends, my neighbors, and people that I don't know, people who are not here yet, to have that same opportunity. And I absolutely hear what Judith is saying, but I think so much of the time we have students who graduate and we lose our talent because they can't afford to buy here. And you know, there's a point in your life where you start thinking, maybe I don't want to be a renter forever. Some people want to rent forever and others don't. And I'd like to have that option available for folks because right now there aren't any options that are affordable for most people. So that's a biggie for me.
Thank you.
And senior housing, yes. Big, big deal for me, too.
And that's, Kimberly, thank you for clarifying that senior housing is something that is, you know, particularly important to you from this list. It's a kind of laundry list and, you know, should maybe be parsed out. So if there are items that are more important or less important from that list, we'd be definitely interested in hearing that as well. Or if they should all be weighted equally, that is also something we can pursue.
A question along those lines, should tribal housing partnerships be pushed up into, morphed up into that box then?
Yeah, I think it can, it could be. I think we had separated that one out partially because, you know, they, it's sort of a different structure in terms of housing as they sort of run their own projects. And, you know, we're not going to be getting a CBPG grant for a tribal housing partnership project, but for a senior project or for a homeless project, we could. So that's sort of the difference in the funding and partnership structure. But they are, yeah, similar in the sense that they're serving a particular group. Do you have anything you want to say to that, Jen?
Actually, I did just want to say that we could, in partnership with the tribes, apply for CBPG funds or other funding sources like Home Key, for instance, for a project. So that, that is one thing I did want to mention is that you could do that. It is a little different because it's tribe to city. So obviously there needs to be a different collaboration and partnership there, but you could use similar funding sources.
So I, you know, just thinking about the Yurok tribe housing that we had, it's not designated for tribal members only. It can serve others, the older adult community, anyone. And I think some great opportunities could come from Dishkama Humboldt. And certainly, as you pointed out, we can still apply for CBDG grants, but that partnership would look a little bit different, but definitely worth pursuing.
I just wanted to check in. I know you may or may not agree with how everything landed in terms of this value scale. So I just wanted to check in, is there anything, the way that's landing here that is not where you'd put it? In terms of its value, relative value?
Can you, it'd be helpful to see the rest of it?
You bet. I'm going to zoom out.
I personally would have moved the onsite management for some of the larger projects more to the right. I think that's essential, otherwise we're going to end up with project, projects. So to keep that upkeep, to keep, hold people accountable, otherwise, because they're not going to self-manage. So I want to see that moved.
That's already a state law. You have 62 or more units, you already have to have a property management. So that needs to be actually taken off. That's not any kind of a benefit. No, that's already, you have to. That's why everybody builds 15 units instead of 16. Yeah.
Okay.
All the affordable housing projects, all the affordable housing projects are also required to have an onsite manager. So that's part of our regulatory agreement with whomever is building that project.
Okay. Okay, cool. I won't make that note then. Anything else? So I, nothing's ending up here, over here towards lower value. Is there anything else you might want to notice? Yeah?
I have a quick question then. Housing, and somebody on the commission can help, tell me why they pushed that one to the right. Housing for artists, craft workers, small businesses using live work or other models. Within the Form-based Code, well, I don't, I guess that would be another one that to me should be in purpose-built special needs housing, students, seniors, something. It's just another one of these categories and I don't, I feel like we're creating a lot of categories. Yeah, I don't know. That one just, I guess I'm asking, I'm a little bit baffled.
It could definitely be moved and lumped in with the purpose-built special needs housing category. I don't see any reason why it potentially couldn't be.
Or shouldn't it be commissioners? I don't know.
Let's hear from you all. Does anybody have an opinion about that?
I do. I feel like the, the seniors, students and those purpose-built special needs housing, they're not working onsite. So this is a separate category. It brings job creation and our artists in our community can't afford to live in Arcata. So the Arcata artists are having to leave Arcata because they can't afford to live here. So I think this is super important and that it should be parsed out just the way it is.
I would like to know, and this would be a longer-term question that we don't need to go into, but the, the live work model, I know that there was a project just beyond N Street, I believe, that was kind of a live work concept, but I think the way it has played out, it's less live and work than some people working and some people living, but they're not necessarily connected. Joe, you look like you have an answer there.
That was a mixed-use development and it wasn't necessarily a live-work. A live-work traditionally has a space that is dedicated for a work area and then a living area for that same person. In this case, that was residential units on the top and like industrial on the bottom. And so they could have separate tenants that rented the downstairs and then different residential tenants upstairs. The only live-work project that we've had so far that we've processed is over on 15th and G in North Town. And that is, the owner is Peter Daggett. And he did a development there where it was designed to have a small workspace on the ground floor, more of a kind of an office area, and then residential units on the top. And I'm not really sure how successful that has, that model has been for that particular project. We currently have land use code policies on live-work that when we talk to developers that are willing to develop them, they get, it's almost too many code, codes in there and it's difficult for it to pencil out.
I question the model as well. That's, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. And Judith, what you got?
Yeah, I just wanted to send, say, or ask a few words about rent stabilized housing, which I notice is at the bottom of the pile now. And I was, I guess, the one who suggested that it be on the list in the first place. And I'm aware that the state has recently really upgraded its requirements for rent stabilization and tightened up limits on evictions and stuff like that. And I, I think it would be great if the Planning Commission could have some more information about what the baseline for those things is, especially for the gateway, but also as we go into the general plan. Because, you know, if, if the state has done most of that for us, we may be able to rely on that if we want to go further in housing that we're, you know, in effect subsidizing by allowing them to relax codes or giving them a streamlined means of approval. I, I think we need to know what our baseline is there.
So my understanding is that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, yeah, the state has already done, it's AB 1482 rent stabilization. The state's already doing its 5% plus local CPI per, every 12 months. So that's as much as you, and they have eviction protection. So the state's already done it. I'm not a big fan of rent stabilization for a variety of reasons, but something, there's a whole, there's a whole rabbit hole. I, I don't know if we should go down. So, but however, I, regarding rent stabilization, this is a little different. So for condo associations, for example, so if someone buys a condo, it's great. They have a 30-year fixed rate loan. Their, their rent or their mortgage will never ever go up in 30 years and then they'll own it. I mean, it's great, but what can go up is the homeowner association fees. I've heard horror stories going from $50 when they, you know, and then five years later, they're $500 a month. I mean, that's a killer. That's, I would be more interested in somehow stabilizing that type of thing so that as the owner, they, as their income increases every month, they're actually going to make more and more instead of their rent keeping up with their income. So that I would be in favor of somehow stabilizing the HOA fees if we're going to have condos.
So I would be curious, and, and I don't know this, so maybe as Judith had pointed out, maybe we need more information, but my understanding is that it excludes the current state law, older development, single-house dwellings. And to Julie's point, my HOA fees have more than doubled since I've lived there. And also, what about? Well, the, the law, my understanding, is for new developments and that it excludes single-house dwellings. So if we're talking about the general plan, not just the gateway area plan. And then also, I'm not quite sure how mobile home parks sit there, but I have this huge need, want to protect our older adult community and those folks who are living in these mobile home parks. And so that's where I see that maybe this could be important information because we can craft it so that it fits Arcata. I mean, we can be creative. We can do anything we want. Is that not true?
All of the new, these new, all these new structures will be covered under the state AB 1482. So they all be under that. But we already have a local, don't we protect our mobile home parks here in Arcata already?
We do, yeah, we do.
Cool. I think Dan was trying to get in.
I just wonder if we're getting a little too down into the weeds.
I was hearing a request for more information on baseline state requirements. And so that feels like an item that could come back to you for a more thorough dive, deep dive. Is that okay? Okay, cool. Yeah, so I wanted to see if we might be able to move on to another category. D-Lo, you had something?
I am surprised nobody flagged increased residential density from the Gateway Plan Policy GA3 for, you know, requests for clarification or discussion of that item. We could either try and field some of that or we could move on and come back to it at a later date. We don't have to, you know, make a decision tonight. But I did just want to offer up, I've heard questions about that. So if you want to discuss it, we can do that now.
I, every time densities come up, it feels like on gateway stuff, it's, I thought we were told that that was, there was state standards about density that we couldn't impact or, I, I don't know. I feel like it was kind of a non-topic at this stage. And perhaps I'm misremembering?
Yeah, I forgot that I wrote, wrote down regarding that one. So regarding Judith's letter, yeah, I would like someone to explain to me how it's a community benefit. Increased density is a community benefit.
I think, yeah, Jen and Ben, Ben is in the audience and he might have some thoughts as well. But my understanding is that currently we have minimum densities and they're, but no maximum densities. But the minimums are relatively aggressive by the different areas. If we wanted to create some sort of opportunity to, you know, to benefit developers who chose to go on the higher end of projects, go over the established minimum density earlier in the program, and we could have it, you know, either function for a certain number of years at a certain set density or set other parameters. It could be a way to encourage more housing faster. So that's my understanding of the intent of it. And we can explore whether or not that makes sense to the commission and what bounds to put on that. Or, you know, take it off the list or keep it very low on the list. But we'd be happy to try and, you know, parse that one out in more detail either tonight or at a future meeting. And Jen, I don't know if you have anything else? Okay.
Do we want to establish a minimum, or minimum square footage to make it habitable? I mean, do we have anything like that in our code?
The state building code has some efficiency dwelling unit standards and the city adopted a building code standard that, for ourselves. It's 170 square feet and it doesn't include some amenities like a water closet or a toilet or kitchen cabinets. So there are, you, I, you can't build- build a 170-square-foot dwelling unit. It's going to have to be larger than that.
You just want to know our rough response to this though, right?
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to offer it, you know, just for thoughts and questions. And you can give a rough response, for sure.
My rough response is that we need a lot more inform, I mean, this is a big topic. And I think that I would have pushed that one way over to the left because it makes me anxious to think of packing people in just to get more housing created real quick.
That's helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Who else? Yep. Judith?
Here's my broken record again. While high residential densities may be important for things like walkability and more sustainable transportation, it is, it is not a benefit in and of itself. It's a function of other things. And if what you're doing is you're weighing these various other community benefits for a community benefit program, in effect against density, you can't have it on both sides of that equation. So I, I think this is a longer discussion. We're not going to resolve it tonight. But the policies are going to have to address that issue.
Judith, I was wondering, just for the sake, because I don't know that everybody here, but would you mind maybe just speaking to the fact that the equivalency, so like a three-bedroom family dwelling is not going to be the same as these little dorm-room kinds of units, even if it does count for arena numbers?
Right, yeah, I made that point before as well, which, which is that the way that the regional housing needs assessment works, it's looking at housing units. It's not looking at the number of people living in the housing units. And except for in some purpose-built housing, the city can't regulate that. And, and so the housing unit and the square-footage stuff stands in for it. But if, if what we're looking at is a way to facilitate the creation of smaller units and a way of having things like single-room occupancy opportunities or privately-owned student housing that's purpose-built or small senior cohousing and stuff like that, those are going to be inherently higher density than, you know, a bunch of large apartments or single-family houses or even duplexes. And so I, I guess what I'm saying is that the density is, is a function of other things. But by putting it in, in this location here, in effect, what we're saying is that that's a benefit in and of itself. I know some of our sustainable transportation advocates really believe that. I, I don't, I don't think that it makes policy sense in that respect. And so, end of broken record.
So Judith, I just want to check in. So for you, it actually would have been below the line. Like it wouldn't have moved up?
My cursor finger was getting really tired. And so if, you know, the consensus is that it should be there, I'm not going to keep moving it off.
Okay, cool. But we've, we've recorded your, the essence of what you've shared, which is if you're looking for other, a way to incentivize smaller units, that's inherently going to be higher density and we don't necessarily need this as a benefit. Cool. All right. Is it okay if we shift your thinking to another category? Okay, cool. So another category that was consistently higher-ranked was the open-space category of benefits. And so I was going to propose that we spend a little bit of time there. And, just want to check in. Is that okay? Okay, cool. So I have summoned you to that zone and I'll zoom in. And so first, I just wanted to check, are there questions of clarification about what any of these benefits are, what they mean?
I have one. Why is there one item above this line and the others below?
I didn't put it there. I think it might have gotten moved early, like by accident, perhaps. Yeah. Any other questions of clarification about what any of these are? Yep, you can move them. I'm not seeing any questions of clarification, so please move around. I'm only going to move things so that way you can still read them. Okay. That's okay. Boop. Get rid of that. Okay, cool. Let's dig into some of these. You might not all be in agreement and that's just perfectly fine. The point is to be able to have conversation about how you see things alike or how you see things differently. So as you zoom in and check out this one that's still on the right, significant public open-space easements dedicated to the city in priority locations and linked to pedestrian and cycle networks. Many of you, or at least it's currently on high value. Anybody see it differently? Like you'd place it somewhere else? Here, I can summon you back. That's cool. Yeah. Hey, Christian, if you're with us, be happy to hear from you.
I'm moving, I'm reading and seeing where everybody's placed things. We all moved them around, so I'm just trying to grasp that at the moment.
Yep.
Poor wetland banking. We're at the bottom end.
I know.
There we go. It's moving.
Okay. Is somebody trying to move wetland banking? Or are you wanting it below the line? A tug-of-war. Oh, okay, cool. Let's, those are the ones I'm going to ask you about are the tug-of-wars. Okay. Yeah, so I'm just going to take these four that are on the far right. Does anybody see them differently? I mean, they're all relatively in high value. And the four are this onsite publicly-accessible recreation facilities, for example, playgrounds, benches, drinking fountains, toilets, onsite publicly-accessible space infrastructure for community gardens, permit transfer of land to city ownership for uses public open space in priority locations, and significant public open space easements dedicated to the city in priority locations and linked to pedestrian and cycle networks. Anybody, so these are all sort of like to the right, higher-value benefits. Does anybody see them differently? Like you would have tugged them someplace else. Feeling okay on those? Okay, cool. These had a little bit more movement, so I'd love to just dig in. For example, wetland banking seemed to maybe move around a bit. Share your thinking about, where are you thinking? Currently, it's all the way to the, as far left as possible. Share your thinking. Judith?
I'm not sure who I was having the tug-of-war with. But I hope they speak up too. I don't see wetland banking as a benefit at all. It's a way of destroying wetlands and then claiming that you're creating something of equivalent value somewhere else. So that is a dis-benefit conceptually and relatively, relative to the gateway area in specific. I don't think that should be on the list. And, and I would really hope that we not consider wetland banking as a benefit in any way, shape or form for the, for the Arcata gateway plan.
Thanks, Judith.
So I was the one who moved it and I concur. My concern is that we have already deemed part of the gateway area plan as being lower or not. What is the verbiage? That it's not important wetlands. And so we're going to just pave over it. And, and so that's a concern of mine. I, I would like to just not to do that. But if we're going to do it, then we need to mitigate. But my preference would be what Judith said, is that we would not consider doing that in the wetlands in the first place. And that we would preserve all wetlands, whether it's considered lower or not.
Thank you.
Most of the wetlands in the gateway area, at least I think the more substantial ones, are also in the coastal zone, I believe. And the Coastal Commission would require us to address those wetland conservation or mitigation issues anyway. I don't think that the gateway area plan is the place to address that issue. It might be something to look at for the general plan, but I would like to see wetland banking out of the gateway area plan.
Thank you. And thank you for also sharing your perspective on how you'd like wetlands to, even if deemed low-quality, the intrinsic value that I'm hearing you say.
So I just want to clarify, is that not what we're talking about with the L Street corridor when we're going to be making two one-way streets? That's considered a inferior wetland? That's what, I mean, that's what it's being called, is not inferior but lesser or, I don't know.
I was just, I just looked up the policy GA 6K. And I think what it comes down to is use mitigation and restoration together to consolidate scattered low-quality wetlands into larger, high-quality wetland complexes through the community benefits program. So that is just a portion of that policy. And the first part is maintaining no net loss of wetlands. So I think maybe, I don't know if it's specifically to the L Street corridor, but I think the idea is to, maybe if there are the scattered wetlands, as it's written here, they would try to create a higher value, one that has more benefits for biological activities. I certainly understand Commissioner Mayor's point of view as well regarding wetland banking. I think that's maybe what the short gist of it, wetland banking, is probably a little broader as written in here.
Joe, typically when there's wetland banking, is there, doesn't the requirement include like doubling the square footage of the wetland?
There are, you know, different standards for US Fish and Wildlife or California Fish and Wildlife, and then the Army Corps of Engineers and as Commissioner Mayor mentioned, the Coastal Commission as well. And the city does have standards itself when we do wetland fill in Arcata. And it depends, it's usually based on a biological study of that specific wetland itself, the, the capacity and the function, what values it has. And so if it's a high-value one, then it's going to have a much higher ratio of rebuilding wetlands for that to ensure that it does meet those standards. And usually there's a timeframe as far as are you meeting those thresholds of what was targeted for that. So the Open Door Clinic is an example that the City Council just recently did where there was some kind of low-quality wetlands, if you want to call that. I mean, I think some people are probably just, you know, chagrining that. You know, I think that's kind of, doesn't fit well with some people in the biological world. But we decided to allow them to create wetlands at the Shea Park where there's more other similar benefits. It's direct connection to the waterway there, Jolly Giant Creek and stuff like that. So.
So wetland banking does, I mean, banking, I don't know if that's the term, but re-establishing other locations does occur presently in the city code. Personally, I think it would be wrong for us to completely eliminate all possibility of any kind of wetland mitigation from the entire gateway. That seems a little far to me.
Yeah, I would say we have to be considerate of that because there's definitely, from what I recall from looking at existing city GIS information and so forth, that there is, there is a good amount of low-quality wetlands within the area that are directly in the path of, you know, proposed development ultimately. And if we have an avenue to do quote-unquote "banking," because, you know, a low-quality wetland can be, for instance, when you drive along Highway 299 and it's a cut bank seep and it's a, or it's a wetland in a ditch, you know, that's been created due to, you know, ponded water, right? So we can essentially gather, you know, the areas of these low-quality wetlands and develop a much larger, a much larger system ultimately that has a greater water quality benefit, has a greater habitat, wildlife habitat benefit. And just from my professional experience, most regulators prefer the enhanced, you know, enhanced wetlands, you know, larger wetlands versus intermittents, you know, scattered about wetland areas. So.
So this is definitely a point of difference, which is what we were trying to seek out and see where there was difference. So I'm flagging that. And then Judith, you turn your mic on.
Yeah, I think we have city policies and general plan policies and the state has water quality policies that address wetland mitigation. And by putting it in the gateway plan, the implication is that you have a wetland banking system that operate, that would operate only within the gateway. And I, I think that that would be overly confusing. For one thing, it would be duplicative. I'm not sure how, how the State Water Quality Control Board and the others who are, you know, working with the Clean Water Act 404 section and, I, I just think that to have that in the gateway plan itself may actually be extremely confusing unless the mitigation would all take place within the gateway area only.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with you. Definitely creates this, like, this idea that, you know, we're creating our own mitigation bank versus, unless that's the intention, is the creator on mitigation bank. But I don't, you know what I mean? I don't know. It's not very clear what the intent of it is from, you know, from our perspective in regards to the gateway area plan.
Right. So, I mean, if we had a policy that said, you know, greater than two-for-one mitigation of, you know, wetland harm or something like that and put that in as a policy, that would be one thing. But there's no community benefit there that we should reward.
Thank you. I did want to just check in. We might have time to get to a third category, but before we did, I did, I don't want to rush you through. Were there any of these four that I'm zooming in on now, did you feel like a sense of tug-of-war that is worthy of unpacking where there might be difference in how you see the relative value of landscaping, of daylighting waterways, setting aside land to support native arts and cultural space, payment into a fee program for open space? If you saw those as like, if you had a really different stance on where those If you saw those, it's like, if you had a really different stance on where those belonged on the scale, please speak now.
I don't have a different stance, but I, and this is probably, I'm just so on onsite, publicly accessible recreational facilities, the playground equipment, benches, tables, that sort of thing, specifically the playground equipment, that needs to be large enough to accommodate the community. We have recently had a development where they put in a playground equipment, but it's not big enough for the community. It's barely big enough for, you know, it's as big as that table. So it needs to be, we need to put in some kind of minimum, you know, to make it big enough. It's going to, it needs to accommodate the community. So that was the only thing I had to add.
Thank you.
Does that get into a situation where they do in luffies or whatever, and, you know, maybe three projects contribute to one park or something like that rather than three tiny little table-sized parks?
Yeah, I think that's still sort of, you know, to be determined, but I think we're currently have both options on the table, like a park fund in addition to like Quimby Acts, you know, and that sort of proportional calculation has been discussed. And I think the Parks and Rec Committee was definitely very interested in the fund. They want the money. But also having project-specific amenities is something that's currently in the plan, the, you know, POPs, privately accessible open space. I did also want to mention, I know that Judith had a question about setting aside land to support a native arts and cultural space. Setting aside could mean different things, but when I was trying to simplify these sticky notes, I was specifically thinking about like dedicating land, similar to the one that was ranked highest, dedicating significant portions of land for community use. This idea came forward from the Artist in Action letter. There is a Native Women's Collective that will be working over the next couple of years to try and identify a native arts and cultural space. They would love to locate in Arcata. And that was something that they wanted to see if, you know, we could explore. I don't have all the details on what that would look like because they do not either. But that is the origin of that sticky note.
Thank you. You want to play with another category? All right, cool. How about transportation? I'm gonna, and I offer that up only because that was again, in terms of all the categories, one that you ranked highly. I will put a red flame. Actually, I'll just summon you. Bringing you in. So that's the wide view. Are there any questions about any of the individual benefits of clarification we could pitch to staff? And if not, I welcome you to move them around.
Does it say in here that one of the benefits could be making a contribution to an electric bus? I don't see that it says that specifically.
I can add, we can always add post-it notes. Shall I do that one?
And it could be their contribute their fair share based on the density of their development or some kind of proportional share. That should be pretty easy to figure out.
Since you mentioned an electric bus, I just wanted to let you know that our electric bus is supposedly getting delivered in December. Exciting news.
Also, I don't know what the provide showers facilities for employees who bike to work. Is that really a community benefit?
You can leave it down below the line if you do not believe that's a community benefit.
Yeah, it kind of seems like it would maybe fall under amenities for residents in that
Julie, is there one you'd like me to move for you? I'm happy to. And we can talk through the ones that are flipping.
Is underground parking actually possible, Joe? Especially in the Beryl District?
Everything's possible.
It's all going to be reflected in the rents.
Yep. All right. So to the right, we've got contributions to fund for bike lane, trail enhancement and associated public space, and also contribution into fund for electric car share and bike share. I know those are far to the right, but I wanted to just check, is anybody here, like, you know, do any of you see it differently? Is there a point of difference there for anybody? Because we want to lift that up if there is. Judith?
I hesitate to think that both of our top things are, you know, pay money. Because then what you get is how much money? How much money does someone pay to entitle them to streamlined permitting and non-discretionary approval? And if you sell that privilege cheaply, you've given away a potentially larger benefit to the city. And so much as that's a really easy way out, and it's hard to argue with, I wonder about it being our highest value. It's basically saying, you know, pay, pay, pay the city money, and yeah, you can build another few stories on your building. Pay the city money, and yeah, you can get away with all kinds of things that you might otherwise have to provide. And so I find those very easy ways out of the responsibility of development.
Can I ask, isn't it just like paying money towards the parks that we were just talking about in the last segment?
It's a little bit different in that parks are a public benefit for the entire community. Whereas if you have contributions to a bike share or electric car share program, those are programs which will eventually benefit a more limited segment of the community. The Bike Lane Trail Fund is very much like the Open Space Fund. In fact, I would be surprised if the city didn't actually combine it with a fund that we already have and not deal with it separately and add a whole other set of bureaucracies. But once you start talking about, you know, basically a subsidized rental program, yeah, pay us some money, build a few stories, done.
Yeah, I was thinking more about the trails. I agree with what you're saying about the electric car bike share program because that might end up only benefiting a narrow group.
Cool. Thanks for lifting that up. And somebody moved it. All right. All right. Can we just check in around the next two, which are, again, next, yeah, you get my picture. The next two, which are project-provided bus passes to residents, specific minimum number of years would be established, and cycle facilities indoor and covered space cycle storage, public access, bike racks on private lands. I know they're pretty far to the right here. Does anybody see them differently? And Christian, this is obviously an open invitation for you to chime in as well. If you see them differently, let's hear about it. Okay. How about moving on to a contribution into a fund for an electric bus, perhaps using a proportional share formula? Bus stop and rider shelter facilities beyond those that are required?
Can I, sorry, go back?
Yeah, go for it.
I was going to comment on this project-provided bus passes. Again, that does also benefit a small group. I mean, the people that live in those spaces. And I guess the community benefit is that we have less cars on the road. Is that what we're seeing as the community benefit? Why we would want, you know, either you can build a trail or you can give everybody that only lives in your building a bus pass?
Well, I would think that if there was bus passes for residents, then it would augment the bus service around the city, and it would justify more routes or, you know, expanded public transportation opportunities for people. Because surely those buses are going to leave the gateway area and could pick up and deliver people. At least that's how I'm thinking about it.
That sounds good.
I had a question. How do we have any feedback on how that worked at Sorrel Place that did it? Yes?
I was going to ask that question too, actually. I don't know how it's gone, but they've had their bus passes for almost a year. So I'd be curious to talk to transit and find out, you know, what the usage was for those particular bus passes and kind of see more how that worked out. So we could definitely get that information. I'm sure that they track usage by.
That would be important because otherwise we don't know if we're throwing money to the wind, if they're being used.
Yes, agreed. Part of it, I think, was the idea that if you get, if you get the bus pass in hand, that there's the opportunity for that ridership where there wouldn't necessarily maybe otherwise be. But it is a good thing to definitely look at and see how it's working out. This was the first year of that particular program with that project.
Yeah, I would like to see that, those numbers too. It seems, you know, it seems like it's valuable information to actually understand whether or not that service is being used or, or yeah, our fish is going up in the wind, like Kim said.
I think one thing to keep in mind too, we were reviewing some of the bus data citywide recently, and ridership generally post-COVID has dropped significantly. So if it just started last year, you might need to take it, you know, with a grain of salt in terms of how effective it's been just because of sort of the overall climate.
Perhaps another, is, I'm not certain, but is, does Cal Poly still provide free bus service to their students?
The Jack Pass.
Excuse me, what was that?
The Jack Pass, yes.
The Jack Pass, yeah.
The answer is yes.
So that's, so that's another metric we can use, you know what I mean? You know, ultimately, I feel, you know, the students or would be the greater, you know, population that would be using the bus versus, you know, others. But maybe that's another population we can look at in respect to, you know, ridership and user.
Nice. So I did just want to check in with you all to see how some of these other benefits spread across the continuum of value and just check in to see if you viewed them differently. So sort of next up on the scale, it's sort of midway, I'll zoom out so you can get a sense of it. But midway out was this benefit of contributing to an electric bus fund, bus stop and rider shelter facilities beyond those required contribution. We did tackle contribution to electric car share, bike share. But do you see these differently? Are there any tug-of-wars going on with any of those?
Yeah, after hearing what Judith was talking about, or some, or maybe it was Dan also, but that it would serve a few as opposed to like a public amenity where everybody. So I'm tending to want to move it a little bit more to the left.
Thank you.
So Jen, can you explain like how the bus decides to stop at a certain stop? Do they have to have 25% ridership? What's the?
I don't know the metric off the top of my head as far as what, what the percentage is when they decide to change routes. I would have to get somebody from Transit, probably NITRA or somebody to come talk about that.
But we know that if they don't have a certain percentage of ridership, they won't stop, they'll stop using that bus stop. And I imagine that other people in the community will also use that bus stop. So.
So you're saying the bus stop and rider shelter facilities, is that what you're talking about and like how that would? Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be just for that particular complex. The other thing I was going to mention, which I've been kind of debating mentioning, but a fund into electric car share or bike share program, an electric car share program could benefit more than just the people on site. And they could also put the charging station or you could require that they put the, I'm just throwing this out there, you could require that they put the charging station there and that they have the car there for their tenants to use, but also that it be publicly accessible for other people. Because if we get an electric car share program, similar to the bike share program, actually, we have staff members who use the bike share program regularly. And so anyone could use that electric car share program. It wouldn't be specific to the unit. So just to kind of, as kind of similar to the providing bus passes for residents where, you know, it would be, yeah, just for those residents. But in those two programs, it doesn't necessarily have to be a fund. So I think that maybe tweaking that a little bit where it's like, we're going to require you to use the same electric car share program that the whole city uses now, which I don't know if we're going to get one or not, I'm just saying that that's, that's how that could potentially work, which would benefit more than just the people in that unit or even just the people in the gateway. Because the more electric car shares there are, the more options you're more likely to go in and say, okay, I'm going to rent this car for the day or for the next two hours or whatever, as opposed to having my own car. Visibly, that's just, I'm just throwing it out there just to make it so that it doesn't necessarily have to be a fund.
Judith, got something?
Yeah. I guess my point was that the more people that ride the bus, the more bus stops are going to be and more convenient is going to be actually for the entire community if more people rode the bus. So anyway, that was kind of where I was going with that question.
Cool. Speaking to the critical mass, yeah, Judith?
I guess I wanted to ask about the thing that Jen was talking about. Was there anything on there about providing locations for electric vehicle charging? Or was, did that never appear on our list anywhere?
It's a good question. I know it's come up and maybe got combined into something else. So we could rank it, put it on its own sticky note and rank that right now.
Yeah, because that would be different than just, you know, pay your money. That would actually be providing something that's location-specific and maybe a little bit more of a sacrifice to the developer as well.
And I was just thinking about like all the charging stations are all located over by the community center, which is not necessarily really maybe, I don't have electric cars, I don't know. But it seems like, okay, so you plug it in there. I don't know how fast it goes, but what do you do while you're waiting? But if it's actually in the gateway where people live, work and are there, that seems like a no-brainer. That's where they should be.
Shop our local businesses while they're driving their cars.
Right, right. They're just kind of, yeah, they're out of the way. Nobody, I don't see anybody hardly using them.
There are some in the parking lot right behind the plaza.
Yeah.
Yep.
It only takes 20 minutes or so, so you're not talking about a huge amount of time.
I did just make a new sticky note for you. So if anybody wants to move it into your continuum, I welcome you to do so. Cool. So I know we're, we're approaching the point where we intended to take public comment. So I don't want to open up yet another category for you to work on. I did though, like I said at the top, want to offer you, oh, yes, sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought we were like working in the mid. I did want to say something about the underground parking, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So I think that it's not realistic to tell students or other people even, leave your cars home. Like, we don't have the infrastructure. And as much as, I mean, I don't know the cost or what it would be. All I know is we're not going to levitate these cars. They will be here. It's going to be a hot mess, and we need to come up with something. And so I would like to see that underground parking, and we'd like to know if there's an advocate here because I saw somebody else have it moved over to the right and then it got moved to the left, and then I moved it to the right, and then somebody moved it to the left. But yeah, I just think that we should maybe not throw that out yet. Or some above, yeah, above-ground parking just seems like such a waste of beautiful space. So.
Thanks for speaking to that. And I'm sorry I rushed you through that one. Judith?
I think I was the one who put that on the list, and I know Colin Fisk wrote a public comment saying that's just a subsidy for driving. You know, some of them, some of them. You know, some of the, some of the most walkable, livable cities on the planet actually have parking requirements that link dense housing to the provision of underground parking where it can physically be done. It does raise the cost of the buildings, but it means that you can have open space and gardens and playgrounds and all kinds of things on the surface that wouldn't be there otherwise. And that's something that really does make a difference in terms of the quality of the environment in locations with relatively tall buildings. Because you're not surrounding your building with parking. If, if, if you're going to invest the money to build those tall buildings, you're sticking the car someplace where it's not going to compromise other values. So yeah, it does make it possible for people to drive without sacrificing, you know, the environment around the buildings. I think in the gateway, it, it probably wouldn't be feasible in most of the gateway area, but I think there are probably some locations near, you know, the north side where maybe it would be. So why not help to sweeten the pot to make that possible and not have buildings surrounded by parking lots?
Yeah. Well, you can also, it could be a business opportunity too, when people would pay a small amount, $50 a month to pay, park their cars.
Yeah, or a larger amount, maybe worth a whole lot more. I'm remembering how much people pay for parking in some areas where I've lived, separate from their rent, completely unrelated. Yeah, sure, it is a business opportunity.
So if an applicant said they wanted to build on a certain site and asked if they could put in underground parking at their cost and it was their own investment scenario, that might, that's on them, right? That's their decision. If we put it in as some kind of, well, I guess we're not even talking about requirements, but it sounds prohibitively expensive. I can't imagine somebody building an underground parking lot under one of these buildings. It just sounds enormously expensive. However, as you say, if somebody wanted to do it, why would we stop them?
And it might pencil out if they're always bringing in, you know, there's, there's always money coming in. And I also just think about, I'm not a bicycler, yet, but they're not going to have to compete with all the cars on the street. I mean, doors open. My daughter's dad went over on a bike when somebody quickly opened up the door. So it's just, you know, less cars on the road, safer for bicyclers, safer for pedestrians, safer for children. You're not having to worry about a ball rolling behind a car and then children, you know, not seeing, there's less obstacles, clearer vision. Just think there's so many great things of doing that, and it could be self-supporting.
Right. All right. Good work. Thank you for sharing your perspectives on, on each of these benefits. I did want to just, like, we've got two minutes where I would love to, as I preface at the top of this session, take some reflections from you about like what worked for you about this session so far. I would love to take sort of reflections, thinking first about what worked, and then I'm going to ask you anything you'd wish to be different or what didn't work so hot for you about this particular session. And then I will turn it back over to you. I know we're at public comment in two minutes. Is that okay, if we do quick reflections? Okay. What worked in a sentence or two?
I'll, I'll, I'll start.
Oh, Christian, sorry.
Since I've been called, since I've been called out and being silent all the time.
Yep, yep.
Sorry guys. I really liked the, you know, the cooperative, you know, just the feel of this and us being able to communicate and look at, you know, you know, discuss, you know, these different, you know, things that we've been looking at, all these, all these sticky notes and collaboratively think about, you know, what are, what are the benefits? Where do we agree? Where do we disagree? You know, where do we rank it? It's pretty cool to see this, you know, in this format and this fashion, and it's now memorialized digitally.
Thanks.
Without somebody, you know, having to digitize it all themselves. So I appreciate that.
Thanks, Christian. All right, we'll take Judith.
Hi, I'm generally kind of a curmudgeon skeptic about electronic tools like this. And I, I think this actually worked pretty well because we were also talking to each other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it, and it wasn't an either-or kind of thing. So that combination, I, I think, is effective and, and now you've got your graphic record of it without having to, you know, take pictures and transcribe it, so.
Cool.
Yeah, I too think that the visual component was a nice thinking mechanism, a good additive to the discussion.
Yeah, that was good. I, I wanted more, so I wish we could have got through more.
Yeah. Kimberly?
I felt personally that this was the most productive time yet. I felt like we got a lot done. And what maybe I felt like I missed out on is, even though it was electronic and it worked really well, I loved your graphic. You're so talented, so having that. But, but I really feel like this was more inclusive. We were able to bring everybody to the table, and I really felt like there was less divisiveness in this process, that it was much more collaborative and brought people together. I know hearing what worked or what didn't work helped inform me to change my decision a couple times.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really liked seeing us in agreement on some things and disagreement on a few things, and whether we get consensus or just majority, we are going to be asked to come to some terms, decisions before too long about these community benefits. And this is a great start. You can see it, you can see us disagreeing or agreeing, but some things will be easy and some will be a little harder, and that's great.
Cool.
We'll get through it.
And in 30 seconds, is there anything you wish were different? If you tackle this again, anything that didn't really work for you? And we don't have to go one by one, you can popcorn it out.
No.
Christian, you all good?
Good to go.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to open this to public comment. If you have any comments you'd like to make about what just happened, you will have three minutes. Please approach the podium.
First of all, as a community member, I found this to be a much easier format, and it just seemed more inclusive for you on the panel and for us to understand what the procedure and the input really was. And I want to thank you guys. I just think this is a really intense task for you, so, thank you. I have a few things. I got my number system. First of all, I have to address the linear park because I think that is the only safe bike route in town. And it's kind of like what Kimberly said about her daughter getting flipped over on her bike. That almost happened to me a few times. I mean, you can call Arcata a friendly bike town, but I always thought that was somewhat absurd because the bike lanes have cars parked in them, they're narrow, they just would barely, you know, do that three-foot area that you're supposed to have with a bicyclist. Anyway, so I really hate to think of L Street getting eliminated as a user-friendly area rather than becoming a one-way street. I have to say that I wish that you would take a stronger look at the Windsong development where I live. And I'll tell you why, is that everyone hated that. It was like, that's not Arcata, it's so intense and dense. And it's become a real friendly, family-oriented area, you know? The streets all lead into a central park. There's tiny lots, there's duplexes, there's some bigger ones. But when it was first built, it was the real estate agents, the brokers and the developers that bought the first street. And I think you have to be careful of that because it was supposed to be affordable living and it turned into a rental street. And I think there's just one family that bought into it that is still there. And so I just, I don't know how you can regulate that, but I think it's important because I love your emphasis on affordable housing that people can own. I hate to see us become just an apartment area that benefits developers and doesn't help individual families. I don't like being a victim of Cal Poly, that they can't provide housing, you know? I just, that's temporary. We're talking permanent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Simmons. I'm a resident of Arcata and a member of the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. I thought this was a good exercise. I think it's fun to look at all the cool things that we can get out of this sort of development and all the exciting opportunities that it brings. I do have to say something about underground parking because it got brought up at the end there. There's that old movie with the, if you build it, they will come, right? I think underground parking like actually incentivizes car ownership in a lot of ways. First of all, any of these benefits in a, you know, market-rate housing, the cost of them is going to get passed on to whoever's living there, right? And so by encouraging underground parking, which is, like you said, very expensive, you're increasing the cost of rent. And then the person who's paying that extra rent is going to have to, you know, you know, pay for what they're paying for by having a car, which also costs them more money. And I know that everyone in this room wants to keep these buildings affordable, and so having this encouragement of something that's going to make it more pricey doesn't really make sense to me. All these other transportation benefits like bus passes, bike lanes, they all actually give people a way to move around the city that costs them less money than owning a car, right? Gas is expensive, car payments are expensive. If you have, you know, bike shelter and good bike lanes and you're riding a bike, you're ending up spending a lot less money, it's going to have less of an environmental impact, right? Because you're not doing all the excavation and digging that requires for a, you know, underground garage. So I, I know it's still all the way at the very bottom, but I would, I would love to see it just totally off the list personally. And then my one other comment about something that you said that was really exciting was a space for Native American culture. I think that'd be really fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening. I want to, I guess, start by congratulating Kimberly on her transfer over to the city council. You will be sorely missed here. Hopefully, we can find somebody that really takes the time and effort and gives constructive dialogues into some of our solutions for the city to replace your seat and also to replace John Barstow's. So anyways, congratulations. I was, there's, I guess, under Attachment B in the agenda packet, under Committee, Committee, Community Amenities Review, the Transportation Safeties Committee recommendation to abandon K, the K Street, L Street couplet. And they strongly recommended to use L Street as a linear park. That is still missing. I think it's disingenuous, to say the least, maybe deceitful. Their recommendation was brought to that, was brought back to that committee for clarification. They clarified it very distinctly, and they stood behind their original recommendation. It was the strongest recommendation I heard from all of the committees. It was very well thought out. So I think with this plan, the Gateway Plan is claiming to have open spaces and the safe bike routes, and I think the, the L Street trail screams to that of what, you know, we're trying to bring to the, to the Gateway District. I don't know why, it just keeps getting passed on. We still haven't heard of any other plans. We keep asking for Plan B, it's been a year since we've told there was a Plan B, but haven't heard anything about it. And so that was one of the things. Also, I want to throw out that the Arcata trailer court on the corner of K Street and 11th, there was, that doesn't fall under the protection of the other trailer parks in the city. I don't know why it was left out. I know there's some very aggressive language wanting to relocate them, and that's also discouraging for me. So, and I think also, I just want to end on, if we really have an honest desire to increase the equity with the gateway area, we should really start by talking with the homeless population. It is like where we start with equity for, for homes, and there is absolutely no reference in the whole Gateway draft plan regarding homelessness. So anyways, I want to end there, and thank you for the work that you did tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Patricia.
Thank you, I'm Fred Wise. Just some random notes. This has been brought up before. Many of the items that are called benefits should actually be requirements, so we need to always keep aware of that. One example would be bike storage lockers. I think they're a requirement. What I've heard from the community is that open bikes, even if it's covered in a carport or too susceptible to theft. In terms of parking, the draft plan has many references to underbuilding parking, and what they mean is, is first floor be devoted to parking, not underground. Underground is possible. I've read that the cost ratio is about $5,000 for open space and about $50,000 to $100,000 per dollars per space for underground parking, but it can be done. On the arcata1.com website, there is the Santa Cruz building, six-story building, which I'm fond of. That has a mechanical system of stacking cars, so you get two cars for each space. And it's economical there because the value of the land is higher. But as an amenity, assuming that there is going to be some parking, it'd be more useful to have a taller building with some parking. And as I think Commissioner Mayor pointed out, if there's some parking that's not, then it gives more open space. In terms of the homeownership versus rental ratio, I do have an article on arcata1.com about that. I propose that almost any homeownership is better than less, the more is better. In terms of the ratio, you can do the math, it's on the article on the website, the math, the ratio figures are not going to change with the quantities that we have here. The, in terms of this process we did today, I don't mean this in any way critical. Last week, you completed a process, it took three sessions, identified 24 topics. For this project, what we're doing today, Commissioner Taggins said this is a great start. You know, just in round numbers, are you like one-third done, do you think? And I'm not asking for something specific, I'm just saying that out of the 24 topics from last week, I added it up. I think you're looking to really do them properly, it might be a couple of years of work. So I'm asking the commission to look at these topics and see how we can speed things up. Lastly, what I spoke about at the beginning, I would ask that the commissioners read that article about the $118,000, and if you could, write to me. I want to know whether I'm on the right path on that or not. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred.
Hello, commissioners and staff. I didn't prepare a whole lot, I wasn't real sure what to expect with this. The format, I think, went really well. It got you guys to compare and contrast without yes or no questions and, you know, I think you were able to interact in a much more civil manner than what we've seen with some of the other exercises, the SLIDO being one I'm not real fond of. I had a thought about the whole process with what's happening with the general plan and how this will overlay with the amenities that already are included or going to be included in whatever the general plan ends up being. I mean, it's, the general plan's kind of been set aside for this to become more of the language or the vision, and I, I questioned that a lot of the work that you're doing is going to become invalid with whatever ends up being the zoning and land use codes and all that for the, for the general plan. So keep- So keep, keep in mind that a lot of what you're going through with however many more of these sessions, doing, doing this, if you continue on with it, will be reflective and overlaid on to work that I think should have already been done with the general plan work. But I've been a big proponent for a long time to separate this big project, the Gateway Plan, get the work done with the general plan, get that up and running. And I think it'll, it would still be a much easier process. You're looking at the Coastal Commission and the Water Board and everybody with what is going to happen with the southern portion of the Gateway Plan. And, I mean, logically, I would have separated those two into two completely different zoning areas because I think it's going to become the big trip hazard down the road. And anyway, it's very interesting watching this all unfold. And we'll see how much further we go and how much time I'm, you know. I'm hoping that some developers will step up and build housing, which they can currently do under current zoning laws. So the affordability for them to do it is probably why we're not seeing it. You know, the grant money comes and goes for them to be able to build sorrow projects and all of that. But the whole thing of trying to get this together and make it the silver bullet that's going to, you know, solve all of our housing problems, really, I think, you know, we should make sure we really get it right like you guys are trying to do. I see the effort and I value what you're doing so much. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I too, I'll get Jim Becker. Always fail to do that. I too did not really prepare much because I was just curious to see what happened. And it seems like it's been a really healthy team-building exercise. And it seems like it's brought a lot of continuity on that. And I do appreciate the strong discussion about open spaces and that balance with coming into the infill. Because obviously, there is potential for a lot of it and potential for a lot of density. And so with that in mind, you know, we, once again, I always get back to the L Street quarter. But as Patricia mentioned, it has something that was, you know, tried to recommend through by Traffic, our Transportation Safety. Also, I was at a Parks and Rec meeting a few times ago, and they brought up that they wanted to see more discussion about it. And not to be pointing toward things that are problems, but it was brought back once again as a GHD presentation, even though a lot of people within the Parks and Rec were interested in having maybe a bit of a discussion about the linear park. I just figured I would pass that on. But just on a brighter note, I think it could have a lot of benefit to the area as far as, definitely as far as recreation and to the community, and also as far as for, and what it represents as far as one of the gateway tenants, that would be a quality open spaces and also quality trails within 200 feet of all the units. Anyway, I'll leave it at that. I've kind of been through this a few times. But I would say without, you know, knowing what those open spaces might be, L Street definitely represents something that is there, and those spaces will disappear with the paving of the road through there. Thanks.
Thank you, James. Do we have anyone online?
We do. Jane, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm delighted with this process because I think it got everyone talking and discussing the issues among each other and giving everybody an opportunity to participate. I think, so I also, before I go any further, want to congratulate Kimberly and thank her for all the work she's done because I know she's worked very hard. And I love it that she's going to take all this, this expertise that she's developed on the planning commission and take it to City Council, which for the most part is lacking the kind of expertise that she has. So we're going to miss you, Kimberly, when you have to leave. But we'll see you at higher levels. As you said, you want to be at, have a seat at the table. And you're going to get, you got it. And you've learned it really well. So I think you're missing some options, like the L Street Parkway, that should be looked at. And I think, I want to make sure that you make these results available to the public that are legible so we can be able to comment for the next round more effectively because it's kind of tough when you don't actually know what's coming. And sort of an interesting issue is the parking structures. Because if we're going to build any housing over four or five stories in the Gateway area, they're going to have to have a heck of a foundation under that because of sea level rise, because of the soils. So it might be viable to put parking structures under that because it could become part of the foundation that they have to build anyway in order to have a structure that will withstand earthquakes. Anytime you build a higher structure, it has to be a special structure and have a special foundation. So I don't see any reason why you could not consider having underground structures as part of the foundation for the building. Now, I remember seeing the buildings in Florida that fell down because the seawater and salt air got into the, and undermined all the metal. What do they call them? Anyway, holding the concrete together, and it rots over time, rusts out over time. So I think this is something that you could ask engineers to come and consult with you about or contractors who have built large buildings. That's an area I think you should investigate and maybe bring in experts about what's viable in terms of having underground parking. And you should consider the parking structures. Hsu is going to, pardon me, Cal Poly is going to build a parking structure on its property.
Thank you, Jane. Your, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work.
I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Okay, we will close the public comment portion, and I guess we'll move on to Correspondence and Communications real quick. I have one thing. This report that you gave us, thank you very much, the Committee, Community Amenities Review. Do we have an updated version? Or is this the latest version? Is this July?
The one in your packet is taken from a specific moment in time. So yeah, thank you for mentioning that. We did what we called a Committee Roadshow, and this was prior to the release of the draft plan. It was summer, July 2021. So that's why the recommendations from the Transportation Safety Committee about L Street and other recommendations aren't in it. It's specific to a previous, a previous time. So they ranked benefits last year, and that's what it represents. There is no updated version.
Can we get an updated version?
It was a separate discussion with the committees. Then the last committees, the committee review that we just recently did was not focused the same way as that committee. That was the initial discussion that we had with them, specific to community benefits, which we, at that point, were calling amenities, which is why I call, sometimes say amenities slash community benefits because we're really calling them community benefits. Now, we've kind of morphed over time into doing that, and I think it's more specific. It makes more sense to me. But at that time, we were calling them amenities. So we brought this to each of the committees and got this feedback. But it is separate from the most recent discussions that we've had with the committees about the plan and about the policies specifically in the plan. So we did bring the, we did bring the Gateway Area Plan to all of the committees, which is the most recent time that we've been, been with them. But that was specific to the policies, and that was what you see in the draft document, except again, policies that were conflicting, which we are going to be getting out information on that. And I know there's been some, some question about when that will be released. And I would love to let you know, but I'm not sure when our next meeting is going to be because it looks like the December 13th meeting is not going to be about Gateway. So I'm, I'm, it's TBD, unfortunately.
And I apologize. I probably should have eaten food before I got here. So you may have just said it. But are we thinking that we're going to merge this report with the new information so that it would include the linear park and other parts from the Transportation Committee and all the other committees?
No, so we, so that's a, it's a separate conversation. So when we met with the committees for the second time, when we met with the committees for the first time, it was very specifically related around benefits, which at the time, we were calling amenities. So that was a very specific ask for our committees to give us feedback on amenities. We came back to the committees, again, some of them, some of them multiple times, to talk about the specific policies and implementation measures in the plan itself, separate from the benefits. So the community benefits, and I think this kind of points back to some of Judith's question, is the community benefits are a different ask for the committees. So we asked them, community benefits, what would you like to see? Then the next time we came back to the committees, we asked them again, okay, here's our draft document. Do these policies ring true? Are there additional policies that we need to add? Is there language that you would like to be edited? And I actually created a table that we used to bring to each of the committees to have that discussion. And some of the committees really dug into it and had multiple discussions on it, and some of them didn't. I believe we did compile that information. Is that correct, Elo, or no?
I mean, it's, yeah.
I think it's compiled, and I think it's on the website.
It's not, the comments are not on the website.
The comments are not on the website. Okay. So.
It sounds like it's easily retrievable, and we can get it up there for everybody to check out? Or am I creating a whole lot more work?
There's always more work.
Yes.
Job stability or something?
See, there you are. We're creating, yeah. I guess I think it would be really important, I think, because they, they put their input, and the rest of us really want to hear it.
So that is the information that went into the second, the draft, the second draft that came out. So that information is in there, and so the highlighted color coding, that's basically what you're seeing. Now, I know that, again, that there's some information that was contradictory or didn't mesh well, and that is the piece that needs to be presented out. But I think the other information that did, that we could incorporate, was incorporated into that draft. So I hope that helps.
New topic, slightly. So we have a December 13th meeting, and then no more meetings until second Tuesday of January, correct? And I applaud the chair for getting in touch with Fire Department and letting them know that there's no way we're having a special meeting before the beginning of the new year, right?
Why aren't we talking about the Gateway on the 13th?
So it looks like we have, well, we were going to have a conversation with Fire Department, but if that's not going to happen, it looks like we have two, potentially three hearings that would make it very difficult to start any further dialogue like this. By the time we get through those, it would be pretty late, is my sense.
Okay, and I just want to note that at our next meeting on the 13th, we're only going to have five people. You guys, everybody has to show up at the next meeting. Is there anything else before I adjourn?
Can I just say one thing really quickly? I know that there's not many public members that are on right now, but I did want to apologize because this is the first time that I have run the Zoom from here, from this laptop. And it was brought to my attention by a public member, Sheri. Thank you very much, that it was run split screen for part of the meeting, and it made it really difficult to read the post-it notes. So I really appreciate her bringing that forward and letting me know that there was a problem. So that was great. Thank you. And I apologize again for that. It does appear that the YouTube should show it correctly, or at least that's what our IT was telling us. So hopefully, one's correct on that, and that's actually the way that it worked out. But I did want to thank them and apologize.
And you did such a beautiful job. Will we be able to take what Heather has put together and capture that and put it online for others to see who could have done tonight?
Yeah, Heather, do you want to maybe speak to how you plan to, you know, kind of lock this now and make it available?
Yeah, so it's really easy to just turn this into a PDF. And I can make multiple pages, so that way you can zoom in and see exactly where things landed.
And it will be on the city of Arcata's website?
I will share it with the team.
Yeah, and we can post it.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.